Okay, we are going to begin the work session on the budget. And I think I'll just keep talking with the goal of getting all of my board colleagues here. Ms. Campos, are you on?
I am.
Ms. Knox, Ms. Alonso, are you ready? Hi, we came to play today, Ms. Martirano. Shashank, do you know if this was shared with Ms. Campos?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we are ready. Yes, we're ready. Dr. Roberts, do you want to frame this at all or just get into it?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Really looking forward to getting into this conversation. I think we are truly moving towards an exemplary way of looking at creating our budgets for the upcoming fiscal year. The level of granularity with which we are going to share how we are allocating resources in alignment with our board goals and guardrails and equally as important with our strategic plan priorities will sort of be evident throughout this process. So looking forward to the sort of entire team weighing in and providing the board with information that will give you some insights into how we're thinking about utilizing our budgets and anchoring our budget decisions in what is best for students. Shashank?
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. Hello?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Dr. Roberts. So our plan today is going to be, we'll be talking about the FY25 investments in guardrails, FY26, what we plan to spend on, and revisit the FY26 goals. I know the board has asked for Goal 3, but we are doing all the three goals all over again now, in a little different format, so hopefully it's going to work out better.
And just a clarifying question, I know that the board had asked for a far broader look at the budget with specific questions. When are those going to be touched on?
So we have discussed at the executive cabinet, and I'm going to request Dr. Roberts to chime in. We have provided responses. Dr. Roberts, provide your...
Thank you, Shashank. Madam Chair, we are going to share that document, written document, with responses to all of those questions with the board this weekend, no later than Friday.
Okay, but I think we're going to want a forum to talk about it, so when do we actually have the forum to discuss it, not just read it?
The responses to those questions?
I mean, they're significant questions, and so I just think reading them is not sufficient.
It will be a difficult presentation in the sense there won't be any PowerPoint slides or anything like that. We may have to talk through it because a lot of it is numbers, details, and programs and things like that. Dr. Roberts, what are your thoughts, sir?
Yeah, certainly, that's the desire of the board. We're happy to have that discussion in a public space, but without a presentation to see conversation.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a strong desire for that, so maybe at the end, we can talk about what that looks like.
Sure.
Because I think the, at least my personal opinion, I'll let other board members speak for themselves, is that we have been far too insulated in understanding the complexity of the budget and how the money is being allocated. And so just seeing the budget with goals and guardrails is not sufficient for me. And so I think you'll probably hear some of that from other people. So let's dig into this and then see what questions remain.
That's fair. And, sorry, go on.
I'm wondering if the answers to the questions can be provided and then and then perhaps we could narrow the scope on, rather than addressing, it is a very long list, so making the answers to those questions public, putting it on board docs, and then if there's still outstanding questions narrowing the scope of the conversation and identifying if a further follow-up conversation at the board table is necessary.
Let's see, we are at the end of the conversation.
The only thing I would further add to that is some of the items that you have requested over there are things that we present in our budget book. The timeline for that is typically June end, and those numbers are not final because SSA is not known at this point in time. So basically, the comment that we intend, we wanted to provide in that thing is, we will provide it to the board, but it's going to be in June. Not, it won't be now.
Yeah, why don't we come back to that maybe at the end of the conversation?
Fair enough, okay. So FY25 guardrail, the superintendent, we shall not allow inequitable access for ELL students or the continuation of systems that allow for it. So we have tried to provide what the interim guardrails are, and this is the same standard format for each of the guardrails and the actions that we plan to spend. I'm going to look to Dr. Roberts and Robert to provide color to these slides, but from a financial standpoint, out of the $3.7 million that we are spending, $2.4 million is towards ELL and 1.3 is coming from Title III.
Yeah, I think as we are having sort of this conversation, for us to probably pay particular attention to the resources or reallocation of resources that are new, and if the board has questions, if not, I think some of this is self-explanatory, right? So case in point, we are, if we're looking at the right column on the guardrail one, we are adding new supports to Central Campus for our ELL.
So is that an actual teacher who is doing ELL side-by-side, an instructor in a classroom?
Yes, ma'am.
Certainly, we'll use wait time to see if the board, as you're digesting that, before we go to the next slide.
Can you explain what the ELL coursework is for Gen Ed teachers? Is that, that's new?
Yeah, that's basically equipping teachers with...
Come on, Peter. Peter's going to join us as well.
Thanks. Hi, Peter. Is my mic on? There you go. Is that better? Yeah.
Good evening. The ELL coursework is in partnership with Drake. It's one of the, it's part of the Blue programming. It is set up for general education teachers to take ELL courses for best practices so that we can serve more ELL students in our classrooms so that because each of our general ed classrooms will have that certification and that knowledge, skills, and abilities to teach the students, so that that money is going towards the coursework for those teachers.
Exciting. I think that if you don't have a Blue, like, what if you're a 10-year teacher, let's just say, and you're not pursuing any of the color paths?
You still have access to that, to that programming, absolutely.
Board colleagues' questions?
Anything on this slide? Jump to the next slide?
So this is the FY26, and what we have tried to show again over here, if you go to the next slide, is what is new or continue, and new is, I would say, largely repurposed. So we are taking something away and putting in this thing over there, and what is the funding source for each of those different investments? So going back to the previous slide, you'll basically see that almost $3.8 million out of the $3.9 million is from coming from your ELL in Title III. And that includes the fast bridge, full implementation over there, new support intervention for long-term ELL programs. We're hiring some, we have some additional staffing needs over here, which we are taking care of, but largely it is continuation of the existing programs. Robert, do you want to add something?
I mean, you've covered it there, that it's taking what has been successful in our ELL program and strengthening that with additional personnel as well as resources to set them up for success.
I would just say that I applaud the work to make sure that equitable access to the regular classroom is available to our ELL students, and I think that that's great. I want to point out that part of this was from our community feedback, that our ELL students also get equitable access to the larger opportunities. And what I don't see on here right now in our, in our work is something pointing toward making sure that, like, we heard over and over and over again in our community sessions, I go to East, I go to North, those options to get down to Central Campus are not afforded to me. How are we going to make sure, how are we going to ensure that those students have access to all the opportunities at Des Moines Public Schools? This is, this is, like, I understand this work, and it's good and, and good for us, but the feedback we got was that there were not options to go to Academy and to go to Central Campus and open those kind of options to our ELL students.
Yeah, board member Dix, thank you for bringing that to our attention. So that is anchored in one of our strategic actions in priority one of the strategic plan, and so that's not necessarily reflected, that level of granularity is not reflected here in this presentation.
Real quick, I got another question.
Go ahead, Ms. Campos.
Going off of the BFLs, I think you posted three more positions. Where's that coming from, those funding?
Can you say that a teeny bit louder, Ms. Campos?
Is it additional BFL positions?
Yes. Where's, where's that funding coming from?
So the funding for that is coming from ELL funding itself. It is overall part of general fund budgets. If you see the last column, it specifies over there that 88% of the total ELL cost is coming from ELL funding. ELL and special education are a little unique. We have the weighted amounts that we get, but in case we spend more than the revenue that we are getting, we can always go to SBRC to get additional spending authority. So ELL and special education are two happy situations as long as we have the cash. It's not a problem. And some of it is coming from Title III.
Without, go ahead, Ms.
Just a quick question, the number of BFLs, if you decided to add three, how do you determine how many to add? Like, what do you base that decision on?
We're looking at overall demand, and we're looking at what is available to us in the ELL funding available. We looked across the board and saw that there was at least capacity for three more and staffed accordingly.
And we've also considered, again, we continue to have ongoing and consistent conversations with our BFL leadership, and based on their request and their ask, this is where we've landed, and certainly keeping the door or the window open, if you may, to add additional positions as time goes on.
I would just like to ask Ms. Alonso if you feel, I know you are such an advocate of this guardrail, and I want to know if you feel like these, how these actions sit with you as we move towards achieving our goals with this guardrail?
Thank you, Ms. Knox, for, thank you for your question. You know, I, I think of the number of families that have left the district, but then I also think of the number of families that will arrive, that will come, and students that will arrive at the district, and the level of investment that we are making. And I think intentionality is what I'm looking for and what I want to see in terms of this guardrail and not doing the minimum. When we say, you know, when we use words like "the least," then we're giving people the least. We're not prioritizing. And I want to make sure that we understand that this is a commitment that we made to families, not based on what we say or think should happen, but what was voiced in our community and continuously is voiced. And so I think just moving forward, it's important for us to keep our eye on intentional, intentionality, investment of resources. Once this is done, it'll be a while before that changes, right? I guess just, I'm just looking for that intentionality, that's all.
Thank you for the question.
Thank you for sharing that. Certainly noted, yep.
I have two questions, Shashank. One is just recognizing the federal funding landscape is confusing at best. There's discussion about moving to block grants and cuts. How, how are you approaching budgeting for FY25 in the landscape that we're going through right now?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I know that there's so, there are so many discussions right now happening in the public space, and behind the scenes, as always, we will have conversations about contingency planning, but we're not going to make any decisions right now in anticipation of what is possible or what is likely to happen. But certainly, we keep in our ear to the ground, so to speak, about the conversations that are happening. As of right now, no decisions have been made, and so while we are maintaining status quo, we are contingency planning behind the scenes.
My second question is, and again, without seeing the whole, it's really hard to understand this, it's seeing two, and again, it's not, maybe these are needed, so it's, but seeing two new positions that aren't working in the classroom to coordinate is a struggle because it's hard to understand, are these two new FTEs that we're creating with the expectation of keeping? So I just want to say out loud, as we think about FTE count, it'd be helpful to understand how many new positions we're actually adding, because those are liabilities we're adding at the same time that we're trying to be cutting. So, and whether or not there's been other innovative strategies to think about how that type of coordinating can take place using our existing workforce.
I'd second that, just from the standpoint of limited resources. I think there's no doubt that we would love to have a broader staff and more resources for our kids, but given our parameters, I would lean in favor of trying to add responsibilities that come with benefits to existing staff that might be handled in the summertime or something like that, you know, some, a creative way of handling that that does not add an FTE.
So let me just clarify over here. I know we say new FTE. I would say they are new, repurposed FTE. We are not hiring new people. They are repurposed.
Still, no, no, still. I mean, I would still say.
Yeah, I think more broadly, I want to know who's been repurposed and why, right? So to me, there's a, there's a need for us to understand, and, you know, when we hear about programs not being funded and positions not being funded, if you're repurposing them, I think, Dr. Roberts, it'd be helpful to understand what the strategy is behind that because that's, I think, something we should understand, especially when we made the decision to move $12 million to have a status quo budget. So I think we're, we don't have the transparency of understanding some of these repurposing choices.
For me, it's about being a thought partner for you. I can't do that if I don't understand the reasoning and I can't help support, like, that's where I struggle with this, is that I can't help support your thinking in this. And it leaves, it just leaves space where I don't think there needs to be any, because we may be able to ask questions that, that come up with creative ideas that help further the, where you're going.
Thank you, board member Dixon, Madam Chair. May I offer, just for clarity, is this an ask to get really granular about the tactical decisions that we are making around why we are, for example, in the case of English-language learners, why we are hiring an English-language coordinator to support our SOEAP program? Because that gets really into the weeds of a level of expertise that we value the thought partnership, but I'm not sure if that's helpful to move us forward. Is that what I'm hearing?
I mean, I think everybody needs to speak for themselves. I think, you know, we have a strategic plan. The strategic plan is put in place to accomplish the goals and guardrails, and it's unclear how, that the budget is completely aligned with those things. And so I think there is a desire to get more granular, to better understand how our limited funds are being used.
I'll give you a really good example. Listening to our district recognitions tonight helped me understand what these positions do and what they're about and how they align to our goals. And, and so that's the kind of thing where if I don't know, I, if I don't know, I don't know. And so I would, I would reframe the, the thought process here. For me, it's not about operational process. For me, this is about how do the building blocks add up to the strategic? And, and I just, I don't know, maybe that's just though I can't speak for everybody else, that's the way my brain works. It helps me to understand so that I can see the 30,000-foot level. Otherwise, I'm just kind of blind. I'm just kind of flying blind.
Shall we move to the next slide?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, I mean, I, you know, Dr. Roberts, I want to give you an opportunity to say something. I think part of, I think, the struggle is we, we have entered a post-COVID reality where with enrollment declines, a lack of clear understanding about projections over the next three years, and, and a desire to make sure that we are lean and nimble so we can redeploy funds where they have to go to support, to support other things. And so asking questions about new positions, understanding why you're making choices that you are, and they're all hard choices, but, you know, this as opposed to a different position. I think it's going to be helpful for us to better understand that at a, at a more granular point than maybe has been asked under the past couple of years of SOFG.
Sure. Certainly happy to provide that information to the board and respond when asked.
Dr. Roberts, what, what is your concern? Because I hear some concern in your response earlier about this being a more, maybe the questions requiring a higher level of specificity. What is your concern with the questions?
Thank you, board member Alonso. So there are two things that are on top of mind for me. One, to board member Dix's point, and you've heard me say this over and over again, I really value sort of the propensity of this board to be thought leaders, for me as superintendent, and not necessarily to be thought leaders for any other person in the district other than the superintendent. I think that's just an exemplary practice. Secondly, my concern is about where, there seems to be the possibility of this slippery slope, right? When we start to talk deeply about decisions that have been made by the experts in the district, they are moments when, while I want to have a framework, for example, of shared accountability with my direct reports, I don't necessarily think it's an exemplary practice for me to get into the weeds about how the special education teacher, right, wants to deliver a particular service delivery model to students. Big picture, so it keeps me informed, but when I start to go too granular, then I'm getting in the way of their particular expertise. So I wonder about a slippery slope.
Yeah, I mean, just, just an observation, I think part of the, the, part of the problem right now is there's no big picture being provided to the board. We are being provided with goals and guardrails and numbers that are not in context, and so at some point, that's the understanding. I actually think we may be better as a board to understand how this fits in the context of a larger budget, and absent that, it's, it's, it's difficult. It's been difficult for me to understand the budgeting process with that lack of transparency.
And I'd add on to that, that I think that, to your example, Dr. Roberts, it is not, there are experts and your team makes recommendations, and that's, that's the way that, that should be handled. But sometimes, I have no doubt that all of those recommendations are sound.
Sure.
Sometimes hard choices have to be made of which of the good choices we have to make and which of the, and I don't think that that should just have to be you. I think there is some accountability up here as well, that we should be helping to make those decisions and saying it out loud because it's hard, and that should not entirely fall on you. But I can't do that unless I'm educated as to trying to help ask questions of the experts so that they can respond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, as a board, we've set these goals and guardrails, and these are our north star. We want the superintendent to meet these goals while honoring the guardrails that we've set forth. And throughout the year, we monitor the goals, monitor the guardrails, and those are our touchpoints to say, to, to have a conversation with Dr. Roberts and see, how is this going? What worked? What didn't work? What strategies are you using? What strategies are you intentionally abandoning because they didn't work? What are our next steps going forward? I think this particular guardrail that we're talking about right now, it's a little bit difficult because we haven't monitored it yet. We're monitoring it at our next meeting. So I'm hearing a lot of questions that really are monitoring questions around what's working, what's not working, what's the strategy? And what I can probably expect to see on that monitoring report from Dr. Roberts is a lot of the answers that, that I'm hearing from my board colleagues. And even some of the questions when you're, Madam Chair, when you're referencing, we don't have the big picture. We don't have the strategic view. I think every monitoring conversation we have is insight into that, that strategy and how we're moving forward for that next quarter and what changes are being made. One of the asks that Jenna and I made of the monitoring report building team is that perhaps it would help us as a board if at the end of the monitoring report, we could see kind of a mini-budget outline to say, these are our strategic abandonment, these are our strategic additions. So that's something that I hope that we'll see moving forward in our monitoring reports, but I, I would offer to my board colleagues to really go back to those conversations that we've had throughout the year and really we're coming up to, right? So all of these conversations are culminating around, right now, we're coming into this huge monitoring season where we're going to get a lot of these answers about for our annual, did we make it? Did we not make it? And what changes are going to be made? It's all happening at the same time of this budget conversation, so that's what I have to offer.
I appreciate that. I just want to clarify one thing, though. When I'm talking about the big picture, I'm actually not talking about the strategy of this. I'm talking about the strategy of adding five FTEs in the context of a total budget.
Right.
That's what I want to understand. So if Dr. Roberts is choosing to make that investment, that's good to know. What aren't we doing? Who are we repurposing? Why are we making that choice? That's, for me, when I say the big budget, that to me, your budget is a reflection of your priorities. So that's...
Right. I agree. Your budget is a reflection of your priorities. So he is offering to us the, this is what's going to get us to meeting this goal or honoring this guardrail, and, and we've said, you, you know, these are the things that we want you to focus on. on. And he is making that tough decision of, you know, unfortunately, this FTE over here is probably not ideal to lose it, but.
But what is that? I mean, that's the thing. We need to understand the choices that are being made.
When do we do that? We, we need to be convinced by Dr. Roberts that this budget is going to meet our goals and honor our guardrails, period.
Well, that's your perspective.
Yep.
But I, I think, how do you do that without, how do you do that without asking these questions now? Once this is done, once April 30th passes, this is done.
And if I may, Ms. Maritorno and, and Ms. Norris, Madam Chair, and Dr. Roberts and everyone, because I, I feel a little bit of, like I'm starting to get hot right now. But I, I think to me, there's, I don't know if, if I sense this pushback, and I don't know if it's because it is assumed that we as a board don't believe that what is presented to us is really going to work. And to me, it's not about not believing that it's not going to work. To me personally, as a member of this board and as someone that has to be able to answer questions in public, I have a responsibility to understand. I can believe, I can believe that this is a great plan, but I have to be able to understand it in order to support it. Otherwise, I can just believe it's like, yeah, I, I believe it. Well, how does that work? Well, pues no sé. I don't know. How am I going to do that? I, I have to be able to understand, and I think that specific questions are valid, are necessary, at least they are to me, keeping in mind that this is our North Star. This is where we're headed. But I want to be able to understand how we got here to approving this because once we get to a certain point, there is no going back.
And I want to just build on that because I couldn't agree more. I think my obligation, I feel like we're up here for the community. It's not about me to be a thought partner. It's to make sure that our community understands where the largest portion of their tax dollars go to, and it's about transparency. And there has never been a greater time for us, I believe, in education to not, to not say we're the experts in everything, but to say we want to listen to you and respond to you and bring you along in this conversation. So I, I think the more we can be able to help tell that story and be transparent, the more people will respond favorably to us as we are going to ask them for more money soon, right? So I think this is, it's, it's about a narrative of openness and dialogue. I would love to see us have more of that.
And, you know, and who better to ask than the experts? That's why we have experts, right? Who do we go for clarification and understanding if we're not sure about what it is that we're approving?
I do want to point out, Dr. Mayberry Mase has joined. So I'm just going to observe that this might be a recurring theme as we go through the conversation, just understanding and in the context of stuff. But I think we just still move forward to the next guardrail unless people disagree.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sorry to make you hot. I have a lot of pores.
So going in a similar theme as what we did for guardrail one, guardrail two is the superintendent shall not allow the social emotional learning needs of staff and all students be unaddressed. And on this particular guardrail in FY25, we are investing approximately $1.4 million. And, and the biggest investment which is actually coming is, is the, the training time for the counselors, champions and, and the staff over there. That is the single largest cost which is sitting, which is almost around $1.2 million. For FY26, this is what we are planning to do. So you may see that the investment is dropping a little bit. It is not dropping investment, but what is actually happening is since the training has been imported, that is not an ongoing investment any, any longer. So over here, basically, new components of Wayfinder are being introduced. Castle Conference staff would be attending over there, and there would be Panorama, which is an ongoing thing. So the total cost for this is approximately $517,200. And on the last slide, we, what we are trying to say is they're either coming from general fund, which is more of a repurpose, or from Title IV.
And help me remember, Dr. Roberts, this is a large group that gets trained and then the, the, it's not a, we're not lowering the investment. It just becomes an efficiency because you have more staff trained and they bring it back and it gets socialized through the organization.
That is accurate. Eventually, we will have enough capacity to turnkey some of that training from the end door.
Okay. Yes, sir.
And then the stipends are, can you explain the staffing?
The stipends are for SEL champions, and each of our buildings, I believe, there are individuals who are really not only serving as champions around the importance of this work, but are providing guidance, support, PD development opportunities.
But they're currently not compensated.
I believe they are.
They are being, they are, they are.
So what are.
We're increasing by half, a half a, or a half a FTE?
So, so the.
Mine are two. That's for a coordinator rather than the champions.
Correct.
Oh, sorry.
So two, how many are we? I'm just trying to understand. Point five? Increase point five FTE SEL coordinators.
Yes, a point five, a point five FTE.
One.
No.
Not coordinators.
Point, half.
Half, half an FTE. Half of one, yeah.
Yeah, no, I know, it just says, it's plural. Okay, you got it.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, noted, yeah.
Okay. One person, okay, got it.
Sorry, sorry. It should be coordinator.
Coordinator, yeah. Thank you for that.
Sorry.
I, I didn't do great in math, but thank you.
That is our, our bad, sorry.
Yeah, that's a good catch.
So going on to guardrail.
Let me just ask, Dr. Mayberry Mase and Ms. Campos, do you have any questions on guardrail two?
I do not have any questions right now. Thank you.
No, I do not.
Okay, we'll keep going. Just yell if, if you're not being heard.
Guardrail three is the superintendent shall not allow the composition of the teaching and learning staff to diverge regarding demographics and cultural responsiveness from the student population while utilizing hiring practices conducted in accordance with the district's affirmative action plan and equal employment opportunity and non-discrimination process. So, so last year, we had an investment of around $192,000. Last year meaning FY25, I shouldn't say last year. Something that was added, which has, I think, worked very well, and Suzie can jump in and speak about the stay interview process that has been done. We have invested more in recruitment and advertising and mentoring of career teachers. And in guardrail three, for FY26, we have expanded the pathway programs. We've expand, we're expanding the stay and exit interview analysis, extending some new monitoring for third-year career teachers. And, and the total investment for that is approximately $343,000. Suzie and Peter, anything to add over here that you want to?
Just a clarifying question. The analysis for the exit, stay, exit, is that using the new HRIS system or like, is it technology connected to the new HRIS system or?
No, not for that. We have been far more intentional and expansive in getting feedback when individuals are leaving the district or whether they're staying with us. So we right now have someone that is gathering the data, pulling it together for us, and then we're looking into what are the patterns or trends or themes that we're seeing, individual buildings and across the district, which we didn't do that previously. So this year, we've gone to a deeper level with that.
And that, that additional, that cost that you see there is a percentage of a person's salary that is doing, that is doing that work for us on our team. So they're already employed by us, it's just reflecting that percentage of work that they're doing to do that work.
I actually just have a question about the affinity groups. So I know law dictated our decisions as it relates to the affinity groups, and just want to clarify that there's no dollars that can be designated specifically to support that effort.
No, thank you, Madam Chair. We are complying with federal government's expectation of us, of us around affinity group dollars. We're not paying any affinity groups at this time.
I'm interested in this guardrail from the standpoint of we're selling the district to some prospective teachers, trying to recruit them into, and I'm wondering both, have we seen any successes come forward? This is very new, so you might not expect that. But then I'm sort of interested in what does the pipeline hold? How are we seeing or are we seeing any really bright spots from a prospective employment standpoint? Or are we too early in this process? And again, I'll frame it in the, sometimes sales takes a long time, sometimes the cycle takes a while.
Now, we have had a team for the past four years that have been ultra-focused on our recruitment and retention efforts. And from that, what has happened, and Peter can talk to this more, is we have been able to identify specific strategies that we have been using that have been highly successful. So we have actually, that you won't see in a lot of other urban districts, have had a very high fill rate for our certified positions and quite frankly, for our classified because of the strategies that we've been utilizing, it's been yielding the results. And you'll also see in our data, when you have been looking at our past few board monitoring reports, we've been hitting our guardrails, meeting our targets because we're finding out what's effective. But Peter, you can add to that.
So to your point, the strategies are all long-term. So we have, and we have different layers of strategy. So there's, there's the grow your own strategy, which we have done for different university partnerships that we have for different portions, for different types of positions to, to attract folks to come to us. So we have a partnership with Grandview that is specifically designed to address our, our lack of special education teachers that is coming into the district. So we got, we have a pipeline of 12 individuals that are in that pipeline right now to, that will be coming into the workforce here soon. We have a 3D program, which is, which is a partnership with Drake and DMAC, and we have four individuals that are in that because that's all that can be in that one right now. But again, we have, over the past two years, or before I took this job, there were zero people that are graduating from that. Since I've had that, every year, we've had and hired at least two individuals from that program. So we have, and we have things like that. We took our first trip to our HBCUs, I believe, in November. And while the individuals we talked to were all, that participated in, in what, in the event we were at, were all underclassmen, we were able to cultivate relationships with 15 young teachers who are, who are, who now know that Des Moines Public Schools exists. And these folks are from all over the country, and many of them were from Chicago and things like that. So for them to make a move from the Georgia area to come to Des Moines is not as big of a deal for them. But they, they have to know us and they have to understand who we are. So now we have their information and we're cultivating that relationship over time with them to try to get them. So those are just a couple of the examples of how the, these investments are being put into action.
That's exactly what I was looking for.
I just want to make, it's hearing all the partnerships too that are growing with you and I and the other colleges and just, I really appreciate the creativity in trying to drum up whatever leads are possible.
And I'd lift up, if there are more creative ideas that push the envelope, I think this board is really open to trying to find ways to make Des Moines an even more attractive place to hit this guardrail and for a, for a, for a new teacher so that we can grow that number and not just meet, but exceed our, our guard, or our, our goals along the way, our interim goals along the way.
Absolutely. You know, one of the, as we continue even to think about our commitment around prioritizing the strategic plan, really strengthening our community, the collaboration and relationships, I'm thinking about our, the intersections between the work that we are doing in the Greater Des Moines Partnership as they are trying to create opportunities around recruiting individuals to come into Central Iowa and more specifically, Des Moines. Because again, we have the reputation here in Des Moines as be, as being the fastest-growing Midwestern city in the country, and so that bodes well for us. And Board Member Dixon, I really appreciated that question because while the talented personnel team and artists are doing a phenomenal job of being more creative, right? We've never had this outreach historically, black colleges and colleges, universities that primarily focuses on Latinx teachers. But there are three things that are serving as barriers that we are going to try to overcome. The first is many of the teacher education programs around the country are now asserting that they want to first prioritize filling the positions for school districts that are within their state. Secondly, just the data tells us that from around the country, only 6% or less of our teachers are African-American teachers or black. About eight or 8.5% of them are Latinx. And even as we think more about like black male teachers, less than 2% of black male teachers, our teachers are black male teachers. And so I applaud our talented personnel team for their willingness to innovate and just push the envelope. And definitely also want to acknowledge the board's support, right? Having, we currently have eight programs with our colleges. Nine now, nine with our colleges, universities. It's an exemplar, and this could, would not have been possible without your support and guidance. So we certainly want to acknowledge that as well.
At the risk of too, being too political, we can also advocate at the state and federal level to make sure we actually have a welcoming climate in our state because that would help too.
And when we get to our, our goal three, I think combining these two, like grow your own was the, was the strategy, and I think that's a, there's some really great possibilities there because we have great students.
I just want to say, this is really exciting for me to see, see these things happen in the district. And I would just encourage us to, to continue to think of ways to invest in sustainable recruitment and then the retention, you know, how do we, how do we, once we, we can paint a really good picture, if you have a good artist, you can paint a really good picture. If you have really good vocabulary, you can talk anyone into joining, right? Until they get in, and then what do we do with them? And I'm not saying the district is an awful, awful place, but it can be a lot better than it's been. How are we going to invest? What are we going to invest to retain and make this recruitment sustainable?
Thank you, Board Member Lonzo. Certainly want to, if I may respond, board, with some brevity, just two points around that. That's, I mean, it's an excellent point. We can invite, recruit and get everyone to come here, but how do we keep them here? That's one of the struggles I know. Suzie and I have talked a lot about our retention strategy. Two things must be true. One is, you know, Madam Chair, you referenced affinity groups. Those are critical to our existence. And so we will not move away from having that as a practice, and certainly we are going to be in compliance with the law. And then the second is just making sure that we are creating opportunities to grow from within. We have a number of individuals who are, are representative of our student population, but they're not necessarily certified teachers. But we have programs in the roles in which they serve that they have opportunities for advancement. And so we certainly have to keep that in mind as well. Yep. And there's the grow your own program we have. Remind me, what is the student program called?
Dream to Teach.
Dream to Teach program. It's an excellent program. We just have to get better at scaling that program. Yeah.
Board colleagues online, any questions or comments? We'll move to guardrail four.
The superintendent shall not allow an environment in the classroom for both students and staff that is psychologically and physically unsafe and unwelcome. So in FY25, we had around $8.8 million of investment. Almost 7.7 of that is coming from FTEs, which is the safety staff, the campus monitors, RSCs, public safety zone officers, safety patrol, other DMPA safety staff. And then there has been some investments which have happened, happened in, in the training of chapter 103, your support in the activities, which is happening, crossing guard, which has increased by almost $130,000. So those are the thing that we are doing in FY25. And in 26, we are, we're adding radios, cameras, card access readers, your intel is expanding the video retention we had, pretend increase over there, increased, maintaining the increased crossing guard expenses, urban dreams. Those are quite a lot of things that we are doing. And, and the total cost that we are talking about is almost $12.2 million. And that split which is coming through is either general fund, DOP, SAVE, PEPAL and different grants. And I am going to ask Mike Lord and Dave, if they want to please jump in, if there are any questions.
I, I
This is a really big investment. And I guess I would just like the, without talking about, I don't know, we don't want to talk about safety in public. So without getting into too much detail, can you give us some context as to what this investment is versus are we increasing the investment? Are we pretty consistent with new investment in safety? Or are we increasing the investment in safety?
So two things, and then the team will respond. The first is, you know, it certainly was an inspiring position to be in when the board last year aligned with us and by saying that we will not necessarily look at costs when it comes to the safety and security of all of our students and every single adult who serve them. That includes physical safety and psychological safety. So thank you for not putting a cap on how much we invest there. And then secondly, I know that our dynamic safety team and operations team have started to invest in sort of the most sophisticated set of security measures for us. And that includes weapon detection systems amongst others. And so there's some others that they can talk more about.
Thank you. Yeah, just kind of a high level, excuse me, kind of a high level overview. I think probably one of the key things there, and yes, there was an increase. I believe it was about 8.8 million last year up to 12 and a half, somewhere right in there, 12.6. Or excuse me, 12.2. A lot of that is, and Shashank broke down the, the funding streams. A lot of that increase does come in the form of some grant funding that we received this year. We have about $2 million, $2.2 million in funding from the state. And that was money that has been distributed equally amongst all of the buildings. Essentially, we went building by building, worked with building leaders, identified sort of their want lists for various security and, and safety measures. And a lot of that landed on cameras, card readers, things like that. The, a lot of it is really just extension and continuation of the things that we've, we've been trying to implement over the last couple of years. I think one of the key things that I do want to draw attention to, and this is one of the things that I think was really based off of the, the direction we received from you as a board and from Dr. Roberts in, in his leadership role, was the expansion of our public safety team, the number of staff members that we have out in the field. So we appreciate the opportunity to be able to expand those, those number of folks. Again, we, we operate with sort of a feeder zone pattern so that we have folks that are dedicated to each of the feeder zones. We've also been able to expand the number of folks that we have engaged in some of our, we'll say sort of off hour shifts, in particular, from 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM. That helps us to address a lot of the things that sort of pop up after school hours, especially during events, activities. And these are folks that we can employ in, in other event type situations and things like that. So that's where a lot of that is, is coming from. A lot of it's just in, in the people that are out building relationships. So I hope that helps a little bit.
I, first of all, thank you for the, I mean, this is a, I think it's always great for people to see the significant investment in safety and security. So thank you for that. The risk of being too literal, the guardrail actually was very focused on the classroom itself. And I'm just thinking about the conversation we had early on around cellphones and the fact that there was a desire to make sure that there was personnel to support that, you know, the radio team. That's one of the things that I think Principal Kelly credits, right? That she had a team of people. There was some discussion about whether or not more staff was needed to be able to implement the policy. And those can also tend to be confrontational conversations. So they don't necessarily need to be, but they could be. Do you feel like the, when you look at this, what specifically is enhancing the conditions for learning and psychological safety, physical safety in the classroom? Are there any specific things? And maybe to say it more directly, Dr. Roberts, we heard a challenge potentially was staffing to implement the cell phone ban. That was early on. That was one of the things mentioned by staff. Maybe that's no longer the case. You feel comfortable about the staffing allocation?
We do, yeah. You know, as we were finalizing the cell phone plan before Mike raised in, what we heard from principals and those who were part of the conversation is that it's not that they need additional bodies. It's just a matter of how they reallocate those, reallocate those resources. But as we go through the year, if that becomes an issue because implementing a district-wide cell phone policy is unprecedented, and so we may have to make some tweaks. And so we want to make sure we're building that in. Mike?
Right. And the things that we're seeing here and what you're seeing in front of you are also investing in the, in the people that we currently have, the, the RSCs and the, and the campus monitors, especially in middle school and high school. Elementary-wise, just training our, our safety teams and our building-wide safety teams. And really focusing, and that's some of the tweaks we made with the safety team, is starting to look at our different trainings that we've had and how do we create a sustainable option that takes us deeper, moving away from, for example, with like C-Stag, you're seeing that listed here, the comprehensive threat assessment guidelines. When we're looking at that is moving away from a virtual model and going more into train the trainer models that we can have within our district and, and really employing and imploring our staff to be able to train each other and support each other in a more direct manner, in a more sustainable manner over time, rather than relying on a, an outside group to continually train us virtually. That, that platform will still be a continuous growth over the years, but we're changing and, and shifting those models based on the feedback that we've gotten from our staff and our community as well, and our families. Feeling like that is an important piece that we need to change and, and address, so.
Just to understand, I promise I know what RSC means, but can you remind me?
Restorative Safety Coordinators.
Okay.
They are at our middle schools and our high schools.
Okay.
And then campus, CM, I know, and CM's Campus Monitors. Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Sorry.
Or acronyms.
We'll keep throwing.
Help me understand, Dave, you talked about grants. In the spirit of our, of this board learning how to push for more resources in a priority where we see it, how much did the call for safety and a very unified call for no cap on dollars motivate the search for grant dollars, which can be time consuming and you don't always get them? Does that push more? And does that help you go after more resources where if we say, boy, everything's got to stay status quo when we're up here and that's the language we're using, everybody sort of backs off? I'm, I'm looking for, to, to learn how to help encourage more investment where we want it.
Or sort of the motivating factors for, for that. I will say that the, a large portion of those grant dollars that we're seeing that, that will be applied towards the next coming year, those are the dollars that, like I say, they're coming from the state. And, and those were, those were dollars that the state came out and said, every school district in, in the state is eligible for this funding. It, it's a, it's a huge investment on the state's part and in a, a much needed injection of, of some really needed dollars. In terms of, of other opportunities.
Dave, just a question on that. Is it funding that if we don't get, is it one-time cash infusion for capital? Or if we don't get it next year because of state budget cuts, we find ourselves with a hole?
It, it is, it is stuff. It is widgets. It is, yes, there, there's no labor. There's nothing that would be a reoccurring cost associated with that. And, and quite honestly, just really quickly, what I will say is it is not necessarily, these are dollars that we received in this grant funding that are not necessarily to, to allow us to do something that we otherwise would not do. It allows us to do things in a, a much more bold fashion, especially when you, you look at things like radios, cameras, the card readers, you know, that stuff. We already have line item allocations that we make each year specifically to be able to address those needs. This just allows us to do it in a, in a, a much more robust fashion. Now, I guess getting back to your original question though, on the grants, we are always looking for opportunities to be able to pursue dollars that are sort of quote unquote free dollars. I, and I will say that there are, there are a couple of grants that are out there that are sort of, sort of the big ones that you would go to for, for public safety funding. We'll have to see what happens in the future. Some of these may be impacted by, you know, some of the, the ways that winds are blowing. But we're always looking for those things. I, I will readily admit that if, if we had some more, you can only go after the things that you could put your eyes on. And, you know, it is one of those things. We try and look at everything that we possibly can. But, you know, there may be opportunities that we, we don't necessarily always see just due to, you know, commitments for, for other workloads. I do think that one of the areas that will continue to be profitable for us for, for grant funding or chasing, you know, some of those opportunities will continue to be the things like, you know, the, the position that we have now in place with the district to be able to pursue philanthropic and some, some of those other opportunities. I think that'll probably continue to pay dividends. We have seen some things from that, that position that's filled by Kaylee Becker. We're always, we're always open to every, every opportunity. So I don't know if that totally answered your question or not, but.
Did the, did the grant money help shift any money back to the general fund?
In this case.
It made this more robust?
Yeah. It made it more robust.
Okay.
Yes.
Board colleagues, other questions?
Maybe I missed this. What is Stop the Bleed kits?
Okay. That, that is actually a, that is actually a program that was funded through, actually grant dollars from Polk County. I believe it was actually on the consent item tonight. I, maybe it was tonight. The, essentially what it is, it is the implementation of a program to position emergency medical kits in buildings. It's, it's actually, Missy Abbott or, or from Health Services can probably speak more intelligently on exactly what the full scope of the, the kits and what they do. But essentially, they are more expansive emergency medical kits than what our buildings would typically have. And this grant funding for these allows us to position that in all the buildings.
Great. Dr. Mayberry Mays or Ms. Campos?
I have no questions.
I have no questions.
Board colleagues, are we good to move to guardrail five?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Mike. So guardrail five, which is the superintendent should not allow an environment that allows families and viable community partners to be excluded, uninvited, and unwelcome into the district's activities and endeavors. Out of the $2.4 million that you're seeing, the, the single largest share of that is the community coordinators. That is, that is the largest cost. And as we know that we have hired a chief of philanthropic purposes and as well as a data analyst. And we are implementing a new software, which is the Microsoft Dynamic Software over there. In, in 2026, what we are planning is approximately around $2.5 million. Our, our new volunteer platform is approximately $25,000. The background checks that we're doing is with the same company, but expanding it. That's another $25,000. But the single largest cost again is basically the student family coordinators and the staff, the philanthropic data analysts and the chief of staff for philanthropy.
What's the expectation? Maybe this is better for a, another work session and another board meeting, but what's the expectation for the new volunteer software in making it easier for our families, our community members to volunteer?
And quicker.
Yeah, quicker. Just get them into the system faster and make sure that they're...
Yeah, we want to make it less burdensome. We want to reduce the burden that maybe some of volunteers and community partners have experienced previously. We want them to have sort of a seamless process of becoming involved with the district. We've gotten a lot of feedback from individuals who have shared with us that they want to be a part of the, the work that Des Moines Public Schools is doing. But we've made it really challenging for them to, to do so. So this investment will get us to that place. Additionally, because we are increasing our commitment to be, be in an organization that anchors every decision we make in data that is relevant and up to date. It allows us to gather and store data.
Just to clarify, because I think the experience is that it also takes a long time. So how is, do we use a third-party vendor or internal staff? And so how is it addressing?
If I may jump in over here, this is not something which has been implemented. This is for FY26.
Right, right.
So we are evaluating to make it more easy and everything for the community partner as, as far as this volunteer platform goes.
Were you talking about background checks for volunteers?
Volunteer platform.
Oh, you're talking about background checks?
Well, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
I think there's some, I think there's some misinformation out there related to that. We do use a third-party vendor, but all of that's been moved to being done electronically. So literally the employee or the candidate and future employee goes to get the background check done. And many times it's done within the same day. Maybe sometimes it may take a couple days.
Years?
Yes. The only instances where it has taken longer than that has been if we have someone that is out of state. And maybe there's multiple states we have, that the third-party vendor has to connect with in order to get that information. But I can give you more detailed information on that.
I feel like that's a, there's a huge misunderstanding.
Yeah.
What I always encounter are people who say they still haven't heard back and it's been over a month. And so I, that's, so I think it's a great story to tell because we want volunteers. And so if that indeed is the case, then it's, but it sounds like we don't have the process yet, or we do.
For, for background checks, we do. Volunteer platform, we don't.
Okay.
Because background checks, Suzie, is already working, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
I can send you more detailed information on that.
Just, just to understand better, the, the $58,000 that you have here, that we have here, that is an expense for the new volunteer platform? Or is that what we pay for background checks? Or both?
Both.
Okay.
It's for both.
So there is a set amount that the district pays for background checks? Is that per person? Or is that like a set amount?
It's per person.
Okay. Do we know what that is?
$25,000 is what we are budgeting for.
For, okay.
Do we know how many volunteers that would be? Like?
Well, I assume if we hit the wall, they'll
Just keep going.
Fund it more. Because what a great problem to have.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Just a
Sure.
What is the role of the data analyst? Because I know you have somebody on your team already who does philanthropy and grants.
So the person in my team is more of a grant writer. This person, I have not met the person, but my understanding is does more of data analysis across the district for the grants. And Dr. Roberts, maybe you can speak better?
For grants as well as partnerships.
Correct.
Specifically supporting the chief of philanthropy.
Correct.
Where there's a need, identifying where there's a need, identifying what's working, both?
All encompassing. It's really comprehensive, not only identifying, but also trying to create and manage a platform where we can increase communication, business communication with almost 200 partners in the district.
Got it.
Dr. Roberts, can you just touch on broadly, there's been a, kind of a shift in how you're thinking about the student family and community coordinators? Maybe just anything you can share with regards to how to think about, it's, it's going to look a little different, I think, in terms of fewer.
So while the numbers will, will probably reduce, what we are assessing is what are the needs at every school? And then we are also rethinking, what is the reporting structure to improve efficiencies?
And that hasn't been decided yet?
Still a work in progress. For the most part, we have, we will, we will probably have that finalized soon.
Okay. Board colleagues, other questions on guardrail five? Okay.
I did, hi, I did have a question. This is Skylar. I had a question around, and I think, I'm thinking if it's maybe within this guardrail, but specifically around community partners and the use of facilities. And just trying to understand, is there an expectation? Or is there a budgeted item for monetizing that? And if so, what is that amount that's been budgeted? And if that's not relevant to this guardrail specifically, you can just dismiss the question.
So I'll say one part and then you add, Dr. Roberts, because I asked Shashank this. The fees list, which I think is what you're referring to, Skylar, right? And we've all talked about some of the challenges with the fees list. We're set to look at in...
In around June timeline, end May, beginning June kind of timeline.
I think the question maybe, Skylar, not to put words in your mouth, is are we assuming too much revenue? Like, are we, are we thinking through what we've budgeted to maybe create the conditions for it to be easier for our community partners to use? Is that where you're going?
Mac, are you thinking easier, Madam Chair, or based on a lot of the feedback we've gotten, or most, more cost, lessen the cost for them?
Yeah. But Skylar, what's, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Yes, I'd say it's a combination of both of those. Trying to understand if, if, if there is an expectation that that area, that is monetized in order to make it more viable for community partners, easier for community for community partners, easier for community partners, is, does, do we need to budget for a part of that in order for it to operate effectively?
Or is philanthropy going to be the?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair and Dr. Mayberry Mays. I think we should take that under, into consideration. We have not done that previously. Our, our primary goal, of course, with community partners is not necessarily to monetize the partnership or make a profit. We certainly want to create more opportunities for them to want to be a part of the work we're doing. So much of what we are doing when we think about expenses that we are incurring is to ensure that, one, we have custodial services taken care of. And then secondly, also want to make sure that there are some utilities while not too heavy, they're utilities that we want to make sure we're taking care of. But we're trying to bring to the board some recommendations for your decision at the end of May or June meeting, for us to reconsider how we have done this in the past and what would be in the best interest of the district, especially if we are really looking towards achieving and strengthening both guardrails five and priority five in strategic plan to strengthen collaborative community partnerships.
Dr. Mayberry Mays.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a sufficient, thank you.
Board colleagues, should we move to, do we, are we going to goal three or goal one?
We'll start with goal three.
Yep.
And then we can transition to two and one. So the total investment, so if you see from last slide.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
I thought we were going to get, are we doing, we were treating this as our 30-day update as well, or are we just doing budget?
Budget.
Okay.
We'll have a separate update that's being prepared that's going to include ninth grade on track, counseling work in the ICAP, and diploma plus coming up the next meeting.
Okay. I don't know that we have scheduled, so we'll have to look at that. That's okay.
Yeah, we will, yeah, thank you, okay.
So here, goal three, if you see.
Keep going, sorry.
Okay. We, we have tried to align that with the strategic objectives that we have as part of our goals, I mean, our strategic plan. So we have got 1.1, 2.3, and 5.1. And, and the total cost that we anticipate in, in goal three is $2.6 million. The big drivers are the ninth grade on track, the diploma plus, which is almost $2.2 million, out of which $1.6 million is FTE costs, a portrait of a graduate, and then the high school fairs and the school links. Are Dr. Roberts and Robert, anything that you want to add as, as far as detail goes and any questions that the board has?
So we'll be able to go into greater detail when we next present to you on the scope of the ninth grade on track initiative, but it is a distinct part of the goal three strategy and one that is going to be a strong predictor for us of students readiness and likelihood to graduate. Diploma plus, we've spoken about previously in terms of its structure. You can see in there the scope of how various line items are intended to connect students to the specific either academic or extracurricular experiences that would be part of their pathway. And you'll also see in there the addition of an instructional technology coordinator under our CIO, Mr. Schroder. We are going to be working to integrate more of the digital learning into the graduation pathways and want to make sure that that is highlighted as a priority. But you can see there that recognizing all of the different activities and/or course content that is accounted for in the diploma plus model comes out to about $2.1 million.
So what is the new headcount, other than the district CTE director, I guess, being moved to district-wide? Are we adding any other physical infrastructure to support executing all of these things?
Not at this time. What we're going to be leveraging is our future pathways, courses in the eighth grade level, our counselors, as well as our houses in the ninth grade level, and working together with administrators on the high school level to bring together the diploma plus initiative.
I think you've spoken before about this freshman class, this upcoming freshman class being sort of the kickoff to this, to this program. Helped me feel encouraged about Mrs. Norris's point. We have a lot of good programs. We have a lot of good resources for our students. The, it may not be represented on this paper. There is something being created so that that first group will be able to progress from ideas and the initial introduction to this to actual programming. And so we can expect a much more robust personnel recommendation that comes along with this, maybe in the next fiscal year, is that, should we make that?
It's looking, as we expand it out to additional grade levels, yeah, that would be more personnel going with that as well.
But can, I, I just, I'm, I'm, I just want to say I feel very strongly, and probably I'm not going to stop talking about us putting back the future-ready positions.
Is that the four-plus coordinators?
Um, I don't think they're here.
Okay.
There's five of them, one each assigned to a high school. I feel like a lot of this work continues to fall on our teachers. And if that's the, like, we still haven't heard from you, if that's the staffing model for this whole program. And so it's really hard to understand if we are just adding additional duties to our teachers. And I, I, I feel like this is community school coordinators all over again. So we finally have a model that I think by all accounts is supported by our CTE leadership. And they make connections with kids, and then they're not funded anymore. And quite honestly, I, I don't know why we find ourselves in this position, and I don't care, but I will say, like, this is the thing that we're hanging our hat on. And I'm, I'm feeling really frustrated because I don't know what's actually happening besides our ninth graders. There's such a bigger world than just our ninth graders. So I am going to be badgering my board colleagues to figure out how we can, you know, get those student-facing positions if they indeed were determined to be effective, which by all accounts, that's the feedback that I heard. So I just, I don't know. I'm, I'm just struggling with this goal in general.
Just from a, a support standpoint, I would agree that I think that's what we, this is what we want, is for our freshmen to have a pathway and to have that roadmap. And I feel like those counselors were giving that roadmap. So I, I also would be supportive of that as a strategy.
Feedback received, yeah, feedback received. Are there questions that the board would like me to answer in this regard?
No, but I think it is a fair thing to think about, how are we going to achieve this with less resources? Actually, it's like a net loss, right? Without the future-ready coordinators in each position, is it not towards this goal as we currently set?
Yeah, we are exploring all the possibilities to make sure that we have the appropriate resources to support the achievement and achievement of this goal.
Yeah, but I think for, it's, it's been almost a year, and I still don't understand how we are going to implement a K through 12 program, other than hearing that our teachers are going to be doing a lot of it. And so it would be helpful. Well, I know it's not accurate, but how else are we going to know what the, the human capacity to accomplish this is? That hasn't been provided to us. And so if there's a way to help us better understand the, the execution strategy for this goal, it would be helpful because it shouldn't be just ninth grade kicking in in the fall. There should be broader components of, of this goal.
Madam Chair, I believe that we've set aside time to unpack and get much more deeper with the goal three implementation. This is just mostly about budget.
Well, then we can revisit the budget when we talk about that.
Sure.
Because they're connected.
Board colleagues, other questions? No questions. Want to move to goal two?
Goal one.
Or goal one?
Goal one, yeah. So, so goal one, a cost is $2.1 million. Curriculum materials, the, the reading assist in the mirrors, $400,000. Maintaining increased pre-K classroom, which is over $1 million. The new SIAID program that we are going to be purchasing is around $528,000. Those are the three big costs which are coming through over here. And, and if we go to the next page on, on strategic objective 1.3, again, again, looking into that objective, we are investing approximately $2.2 million, whether it is the dyslexia specialist that we are going to be adding over there, or the new summer ELL program. And I've tried to give in the last column, what is the funding, where it's coming from? And the last page shows for, for the total amount of $4.3 million. What are the different sources of general fund? Utilizing a lot of old MEA, AEA services, the media services and education services costs that were earmarked, that is coming to us, we are using that, special education, title, money coming from city, all those different things. So I'll go back to the goals itself in case the board has any questions.
The city funding, can you just, is that specifically for which part of, is that pre, is that pre-K?
It is.
So is, okay. And is the Reading Corps AmeriCorps? An AmeriCorps program?
Reading Corps is AmeriCorps, yes.
What if we don't? It's been really hard to get AmeriCorps members based on the, the wages that are being offered. If we don't get these people.
We've already gotten it from our pilot of about 13 schools, and we've been able to have them working successfully with students. And we've received assurances from AmeriCorps that we're going to be able to have the necessary personnel there.
Do we use our own students? Can we use our own students?
For AmeriCorps?
Yeah. 18, no.
They would have to be alumni.
Got it. I just have a question about summer ELL. So is that summer school or summer camp?
That's a planned summer enrichment program, yes. Particularly as we move towards supporting, yeah.
And just a comment, because I think in past years, money's been spent and there's been not the return on investment. Ms. Knox maybe can help remember that during COVID and others. So I, I just want to point out that, not you, Dr. Roberts, but there's been different feedback on the efficacy of the summer programming. Is that right, Ms. Knox? Do you remember it the same way?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Incidentally, we've had a discussion about, as we think about returning investment, you know, oftentimes, one of the barriers is teachers haven't worked all year.
Right.
Are not necessarily inclined to want to take summer jobs because they have their own families, certainly need that long time. But I think it would be a missed opportunity for us not to, as we think about summer slide, looking at our data on English language learners, for us not to at least have some enrichment program would be a missed opportunity. So we're going to give it a shot. There's a lot of planning that will be going into that right now.
Yeah, it'd be great. I think it'd be wonderful to see the data afterwards, just to see. So, so we can actually build back the confidence in you saying, yes, it works and it's worth the investment.
We're committed to getting, having the board see that information and furniture all of that, yeah.
Board colleagues, other feedback on goal one?
I do a quick, so going back, um, to. Let me go back, sorry. The dyslexia specialist, so KDA five, that's a new position. Is that, what is that until?
So we've previously had a dyslexia specialist, but that person has primarily focused their energies in the secondary grades. And we wanted to make sure we had somebody who was focused exclusively on the primary grades and in the elementary school setting, working directly with teachers and ensuring that those, for those students who are identified as dyslexic, that the appropriate strategies are being put into place to support their progress.
I guess I just want to ask a clarifying question, because pre-K hasn't shown up anywhere here. And I'm, I guess that's a question for you, Dr. Roberts, if that's part of the goal one strategy? Or how, like, how pre-K is showing up in our goals and guardrails? And if we should expect it to be, I guess?
In, in terms of strategic plan, certainly in priority one and goals and guardrails, why, while we do not have pre-K as an, looking at our pre-K data as an interim goal.
Okay. So, well, I guess just a question then, because there's been discussion about, we've talked about this, class size, as it relates to elementary school and class size ratios. And so has there, has, have, help me understand if you've thought about that and large class sizes at the elementary school level? And are we addressing that in staffing? I just, I think, I think if I piece together what you said, the conditions for learning are better with smaller class sizes in elementary schools.
Yes.
Which might help improve literacy. Like, is there, are you making any adjustments to address for the class size issues at the elementary level?
We have to see Rob wants to win as well, but we have to. There are three things that come to mind. One, we have to think about looking at every school individually. There are some of our elementary schools that have much larger class sizes, and it's a burden on our teachers. And so we're having those conversations. And secondly, physical space, right? Physical space is an issue in some of our buildings, based in the sections, two or three section buildings. So we're taking a look at that as well to make sure that we are keeping class size on our radar. And then thirdly, wanted to have a collaborative sort of comp, set of collaborative conversations with our DME leadership, because that's on their radar as well. And trying to thought partner around, what is the best way to approach that? Rob?
I would agree with, with all of those comments. We know that class size matters. We also know the teacher quality and dealing with whatever the students, number of students that they have matters. And we are consistently examining what the class size impact is on student achievement.
Yeah, and actually, something you said that I also thought was interesting, which is you may have a roster of 35 and 25 present, right? So, I mean, I'm using that as an example, but the, is, is that accurate too? Like, the numbers are maybe not as high as they are because of absenteeism?
Yeah, we don't want to minimize a teacher's experience by thinking about.
Okay.
How we look at class sizes versus our chronic absenteeism rate, right? If a teacher has 90 students on their roster, it's 90 students that they're comfortable for. Even if that teacher's roster have a 20% chronic absenteeism, so instead of having 30 in a class, they only have 22, it's not necessarily just about who the physicals, who are the students who are physically present? It's who the teachers are responsible for. So something for us to think about.
And so when you say you're looking at it, is that trying to make those building-by-building adjustments for this coming school year?
Yes, the long-term and the short-term strategy. The long-term strategy, of course, is reimagining education as we look at occupational versus functional capacity and what decisions we have to make around schools that have a struggle with physical space. The short-term strategy is to continue to think about the number of teachers we hire in and also how we are assigning sort of students to specific schools.
Okay, at the risk of being a push and a pain, I just, I want to understand if we have data that shows that a classroom is significantly overcrowded.
Yes.
And define the term, right? Whatever the ratio is that you think is the right ratio, are we addressing it for FY '26?
Yes, we are. Yes, we are.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for the question, yeah.
Board colleagues, that was goal one. Oh, I guess goal two. Any, any questions? Goal one.
The total cost for this goal is $3.7 million. Again, based on the strategic objectives, we have tried to show the cost under each one of them. For, the largest cost is for the 90% of the students will meet the grade level proficiency and literacy outcomes, which is almost $2.6 million. And if we see on next page, almost $1 million on opportunity and achievement gaps between students, sharp no more than plus minus 5%. plus minus 5% variance across disciplines and programs.
Can you talk a little bit more about the staffing model? And, and really the team structures? I think that's new, I mean, it's old, but it's new again, coming back to teams. Has it always been that way? Have we always had middle school teams?
We are moving forward in sixth grade with a model in which the teams are more integrated than they have been in the past, where English and social studies are being partnered together and math and science are being partnered together. The same thing is happening in our sixth grade classes in the elementary schools where we're piloting, uh, the, the new sixth grade model there. So that's where, for example, you're seeing, uh, additional FTE and curricular materials for that teaming to ensure that, uh, teachers have the appropriate resources and backup to be able, uh, to support the model.
So have we already added nine FTE to create these sixth grade teams?
They've been allocated, reallocated. They were not new FTEs.
They're not, they're not new FTEs.
Suzie?
They're, they're reallocated, yeah.
So, um, some of the, when running the staffing formula, you know, some buildings have lost enrollment. So they may have lost a teacher because of that. Um, and so then that position gets repurposed to go into sixth grade. So some of the FTE came from middle school and some of the FTE came from elementary.
Are they teachers, the FTEs?
Yes.
Board colleagues, other questions for goal two? Okay. Uh, Dr. Mayberries and Ms. Campos, I just want to make sure that you don't have any questions.
Still here, no questions.
Okay.
No, I'm good.
Thank you. I guess I, you know, I, I, I know it's late, but I also think we need to come back to where we started. The conversation, which is, um, there's still a lot of information that I think the board is wanting. With regards to how the budget's put together, how some of the choices of things that were cut, because there were things that were cut. Understanding that a little bit better, so we can respond to inquiries from the community. And, uh, and I think more broadly, I'll just say, uh, and I'm, I'm not saying Kim said this, I'm saying Kim helped me eloquently put in words what I want to say, which is, I still don't see the, the granular alignment of our budget to our strategic plan. And our strategic plan is how we're going to accomplish our goals and guardrails. And so personally, I'm looking for a, like, let's just, you know, go back to the basics of, of all of our different streams of money and, uh, really take a different look at it. Because we're about to embark on a really big pivot and we're identifying capital assets, but we also are going to have to identify general fund and other dollars to support this pivot. And I feel like there's a process we need to go through. Uh, I'm not the expert, but I think there's, um, a far deeper process that, that she should be considered potentially even before a, an auditor is brought on, that a third party would come in and, um, help us unpack.
And I think for me, Madam Chair, it's, it is about understanding so that we can pull out and, um, see the vision over a longer period of time so that if some of these programs over the long term to ensure stable funding, is that private money that we're thinking about for that? And does that work need to start now? And how are we helping you think about and prioritize those things? Is it, um, are we gonna need more people? Where are we gonna be recruiting them from? Over the next 10 years, how are we gonna build that pipeline? Those are the questions that I'm asking. Not, how are we gonna teach English in this classroom? That, I leave it to you. And how many people teach English? I leave it to you. But, um, where those bump up against, uh, the large priorities, the large buckets of where we find the, the funding to do it? Knowing where it's not, knowing what we're giving up, I think that was the thing that resonated with me. What's the, what's the choice we're not making? I'm always like, okay, how can we help you get that too? Because I don't want it left off if it is going to be valuable toward getting toward our goal. So that, that's where my head is about, about the budget and thinking about, it's all about where can we find the most resources and how can we be of help in getting there?
Thank you. Um, I, I'm certainly, I heard Madam Chair reference having a third party come in. I would love to hear more about what that means and what it looks like. When we implemented a five-year strategic plan, at least introduced it, um, on January 14th. Um, and that process occurred with the support of a group of experts who, um, helped us along, along with our strategic plan and committee to erect a plan. The implementation process of that plan is what we are planning now. We are probably, um, two months in to the rollout of the plan. And in terms of exemplary practices around strategic plan models, we are certainly within a good timeline. And our goal is to make sure that by the time we get to July 1st of, um, 2025, we will start to see strong alignment between strategic plan priorities, strategic objectives, strategic actions, key results, how it intersects with the board's goals and guardrails and our budget. So would love to hear more about the thinking, because if we sit here, based on what I'm hearing and what all the teammates are hearing, is that we do not have a process in place and that's not accurate.
No, I think, uh, look, the word audit, I think maybe is being misinterpreted. I think there is no question of impropriety. There's no question of, of bad decision-making. I would say that since my first year on the board, uh, with other board colleagues sitting at this table, there's been a regular request to unpack the history of spending that seems to just be kind of additive, as opposed to maybe deconstructed, to make sure that we are as lean as possible to accomplish this vision.
Sure.
And as we are moving into a ridiculously complex time, where we're not always going to have $12 million to, uh, bail us out. And, um, unless there's something that we haven't seen, I'm not sure I've seen any big cuts in the budget. So we didn't cut anything. So, like, to me, I, um, so call it what you want, you can call it an audit. It's a third party that comes in and really digs through the pots of money. But we, we need to have projections for the next three years to understand decisions that we're making and playing them out in the context of a budget. So happy to put something, you know, there are people smarter than I, um, that can, can put that together. But it's not, it's not our own team, right? It's actually asking, um, external professionals to come in and help us unpack a very complex budget. Happy to provide more information.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair.
I think going to what Jackie just said, um, you know, having somebody come in, audits are not negative. They're not bad. It's just gonna help us out and see if we do have allocations that need to be allocated someplace else. I don't think it's a negative thing, Dr. Roberts. And I feel like you're taking it that way.
Ms. Campos, thank you for that offering. I, I know, um, certainly that's not an accurate, um, sort of observation of how I'm responding to this. I'm trying to get a better understanding of why we, uh, would need an external party to come in and make, uh, sort of provide us with guidance to align our budget to the strategic plan, board goals and guardrails, when we have a number of individuals who are, are already in place. And again, I remain open to Madam Chair's suggestion about providing more information as to what that looks like. I've just never seen or experienced that as a practice, um, unless there were challenges that, again, um, were brought to the forefront.
Happy to bring forward.
And I'd echo that that's not the, that's not the intent. That's not, there's no, I, I wouldn't, I guess I can't speak for everybody else. I would not say that there is anything but, um...
As an example, though, I would just say, like, in, and again, Shashank, I think you, you work at the mercy of everybody else giving you the information. But, um, you know, did we start with zero? You know, I mean, honestly, there is a little bit of additive, right? So did we start at zero and say, what do we need to accomplish? And, and that's the type of different thinking that we have to bring to this conversation. Because if we have, uh, infrastructure, uh, as a result of reimagining education, but we don't actually have the funding to support the new and innovative programming, that's a concern. Like, all the professional development that it's going to take, the, there's just a, a complexity that I think, um, we have to have a plan for that. We have to have a path, pathway for that and we don't. I mean, there's, yeah, so...
And if it's there and we're just not educated about it, then we need to be educated about it. Like, that's that, like, if we're just not seeing it, it's, and if it's there and we just don't understand it, then I need to seek to understand it better, because that will help me, that will help guide me through the process a little bit more, um, to understand. Step three, there's already vision for step three. And we're on one and so let's concentrate on one and getting that done right. Three's, three's in, in the works. That's what I am, am thinking about. And trying to, trying to make sure that I understand is the vision.
I think one thing I'd offer as we think about programming in general, we sort of have a history of coming up with really good ideas and then just not funding them anymore. I mean, I, we just had the conversation with the families about IB, the IB program and how it could be a great program, we don't fully fund it anymore. And I, and I think there's a little bit of that responsiveness that I feel to our community as we go out and talk about additional signature schools. We've had some really great ones that have come into the district. And I think it's just, at, at least one, one thing that you're saying that resonates with me is ensuring that we prioritize the funds that we're talking about as we're setting forth a new vision. And I think it's sort of breaking that cycle, um, of, of having great ideas and maybe not bringing, bringing them to fruition and then blaming it on funding. Like, let's just not have funding be the problem. Let's be playful.
Ms. Marterano?
I would just offer that, um, perhaps it's not to the level of detail that you're describing, or desiring at this moment, but I think that, again, I'm going to say it, our monitoring reports are providing many of the questions that were asked tonight were answered in our monitoring reports that we've already received. Again, it may not be to the level of granularity, but, um, that, that I think is the pathway to us asking the questions and receiving the information that we're inquiring about.
Other comments?
It sounds like we need to continue to talk about monitoring and asking the questions that will give us the, the answers that we, that we need. And I'm looking forward to our time together.
Uh, board colleagues on the phone?
Yeah, it's been an interesting conversation to, to observe. I joined a little late with it. Um, I, I guess, in, in summary, what I, what I would share just from probably the last 45 minutes or so, there seems to be maybe some, some disconnect with understanding how the aligned budget dollars are going to justify the plan and the implementation going forward. My response to that is in twofold. One, I, I, I do think there's probably maybe just a gap in understanding. I, I think that certainly exists. But two, I do only want to be respectful of the experts that are putting this together. And one of the examples I saw this happening was, um, now I am very much in favor of, um, the career, the career professional roles that were recently cut and, and...
Please, one second.
All right. In my head, I would believe that maybe you need to have these designated resources to be able to do this also. But I also know that I'm not working with this, uh, body of work directly. So perhaps a fractional role is the right, in the appropriate route. So I happen to check myself also and recognize that I don't know all the details and I'm okay, and I have to get comfortable with knowing that I don't know all the details and that I don't, that I don't need to know all of the details, um, in order to believe that it could, could be effective. So I, I, I share that to say like twofold, there are things that we just don't know because we're not in the minutia of it. And there are certainly probably opportunities to continue to be educated on how the dollars are aligning with the actions that we all want to see collectively.
Great, thank you. So can we maybe just check in on the schedule? Because there was an addition to a budget, something you sent out that I think was different than what was on the original budget schedule.
Uh, that is accurate. So we were supposed to have sent the budget to the register.
Mm-hmm, I'm listening.
We were supposed to have sent the budget to the register yesterday. Based, because once we send it to the register, they require a certain timeframe before it is published. And after it is published, we have to give the community a certain window of time and then the board to approve, yeah. Based on the way the discussions had gone in the last board meeting and on, based on your email, which you said that we may need some time to revisit, we wanted to understand if the board is comfortable with us moving forward. So that is the reason why we have pushed that out by a week. So, so now we would be sending that information to the register to be published on 7th. It'll get published on 14th and the public hearing would be on 21st. So, so that is, 22nd, sorry. So, so that is the reason why that extraordinary meeting has been scheduled now, yeah.
We originally had either budget or reimagining education from the 22nd.
No, this is the 22nd. So, uh, it's a virtual, is it virtual?
Yes, it can be virtual, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, because we were trying to... So can, can we just, indulge me, can we go through like the, all the dates in April, just so we've got everything?
Makes sense, yeah.
Scheduled?
Four, eight is our next one, work session.
Yep, and that's on?
Goal one, goal one.
So we're gonna monitor?
Goal one.
Goal one.
And that's gonna go on 4/15, under consent.
Okay.
Do we have a budget work session next week? No.
4/15 is when we have the next session, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we have re, and we have reimagining education on the 15th. That's, that's gonna take a chunk of time.
It will.
And then the 22nd?
Which can be a virtual meeting.
Let's make it a virtual. I mean, I'll, I'll come in person, uh, yeah. And then if people want to just, um, do it virtually. And then, should we do the, um, monitoring next? We, we can't put it any other time, we have to do it next week.
The eighth, on the eighth? Monitoring goal one?
Goal one.
No, um, the goal three.
Goal three on the eighth.
We were supposed to get the update.
When were we planning? Was it the eighth?
It was originally planned for today. And then it was not on the agenda.
We can add it to the eighth?
We can add to the eighth.
We can add to the eighth.
This way we just?
Sure.
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah.
Goal three on the eighth.
As a reminder, I'm not available on the 22nd in the evening.
Yes, that, which I thought that's why we were offering a virtual...
Yeah, okay.
I mean, are you gonna, we can talk about it afterwards.
Let's talk about it offline, but yeah, I'll try to make that happen, yeah.
Okay, so to recap, I think my job is to check in with all of the board members and get additional feedback on how they would like to move forward. And I would just like to say, thank you, Shashank, you're always in the hot seat. Uh, and it's not a great place to be and it's not really fair. So thank you for hopefully understanding that this is not personal. It's a really hard job you have. It's business, so thank you, appreciate it. And Dr. Lindin, thank you.
And Dr. Lindin, thank you as well.
And so, Madam Chair, in terms of the list of questions, we will have the document, the written document to the board by this weekend, then we are going to create space to have the discussion about those questions.
Yeah, and I think maybe just reflect on the conversation and we can come up. What's missing, I think, at least for some of us, is just this understand, the broader understanding of the context and then the choices that have been made.
Yes.
And just how, how you chose to make those choices, right? And it's okay, like, I think we're actually saying, like, you said with a strategic plan, things are going to get cut. Great.
What are those things and why? I have clarity of that, that's fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Work session is done. Good night, Anna.
Thanks, everybody.
Feel better, and goodbye, Skylar.
You don't have to close it out, no?
Thank you.